Somebody's gonna bring it on the outside.
Call this meeting in order Supervisor Conover. Yes, if we could remain standing for a minute and uh perform in a silence for Supervisor Taylor, Bud Taylor who passed away recently. Thank you.
Mr. Conover.
Here.
Mr. Leggett. Mr. Diamond. Mr. McDevitt.
Yeah.
Ms. Bramer.
Here.
Mr. Bruno. Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mrs. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Drossi.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Dickinson. Mr. Merlino.
Here.
Mr. Schrau.
Here.
Mr. Wile.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Etoo.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Runyon.
Here.
Chairman Garrity.
Here.
Form is established.
Okay. Now we'll move into privilege of form public comment and I have a couple visitors here this morning and uh first I'd like to introduce Bob Bowman of Special Olympics New York. He'd like to speak to us for a minute. And he has some athletes with him which he'll introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors, good morning. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes. We didn't want to have the year without coming to say thank you very much for your support for Special Olympics. As you well know, we finished up our third year here in Guns Falls. Um and it was nothing short of spectacular and we're excited about spending another three here. So we just want to come and say thank you. On each desk, there was a hat that was designed by one of our Special Olympians from Buffalo, New York and designed by New Air Company. It's based out there. We also have a folder that has uh information regarding the impact of Special Olympics uh on communities and our athletes. So there's some information for you there. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce a couple of athletes that we brought with us today. First is Liza, who uh is a Queensberry uh resident. She's here with her mom and dad. She's a downhill skier and a tennis player. And recently found out she's going to be attending the World Games in turn Italy in 2025 representing Team New York. We also have Matt from the Capital Region. Uh Matt is a weight lifter and a floor ball player. Matt actually is a gold medal winner from the uh US Games in Orlando. And he told me on the way here. On the right up, he told me he's now lifting four hundred and thirty-one pounds. Is that correct? Four thirteen. Sorry, you gotta mix up it. So uh Liza, would you care to say some words?
Hi, I'm Liza. I'm a I am a Special Olympic. I live in Warren County and thank you hosting for Special Olympic Fall Games and then for I am so proud. Welcome my friend and all the athletes to compete my home turf in Grand Park Games.
Hi, I'm Matt Graham. And um I also competed in Fall Games um for softball skills. I normally compete in teams, but because of the rain, we had to do skills, but I came back with the gold. Um and um I just want to thank you all for hosting us. And I am excited for three more years.
Yeah.
It was a nice place for the chairman.
Next, we have Ed Moore of the Glens Falls Civic Center Coalition. Ed.
Well, Supervisors, thank you for having us up here. I have a few of our Coalition members here. Dan Burke, our president, is down there. Dan, you want to give a wave? And Jeff Mead, our general manager. And I believe Elizabeth Mahoney's here or supposed to be here. Elizabeth, she's right there. All right. Wanted to come up on behalf of the Coalition and thank you folks for all you've done and all the support that you've given. The uh the Cool Insurance Media Company, the Glens Falls Civic Center. Without your support, none of the accomplishments that we have would be possible. You know, we started just a quick synopsis. Some of you may not remember some of the things that how we started out. We started out, believe it or not, nine years ago. Nine years we've had that and you've been supporting us since day one. And here we go, nine years later, it's been amazing improvements. None not because because of your support. The money when we first took over, we came in and we said, we can't do this. We had an agreement with the city, but we couldn't do it without your support. We needed to be just given that little bit of confidence. And I know you gave it to us and it's just taken off and they've done so many improvements done. The latest thing here is uh the the uh the what do you call it? The Heritage Hall, which if you haven't seen it, some of you may have. It's just amazing. And this never would have happened without your support, every one of you. And I know you always ask questions and things and you should. But we have amazing group of people we put together, sixteen people years ago from from attorneys. You know, like Liz who supports us and and Dan who is a banker to to accountants. And we have that today. We have a broad scope of business people, athletic directors. So this team that we put together is very diverse, very business conscious as well as community conscious. And so we're just grateful for that. We want to also invite you down to see some of the improvements. With your support, we were able to put the suites together. If somebody had been there, we have amazing suites there. The Heritage Hall has just been just blown us away. And with your support, there's many things you don't hear about. You hear about those big things, but we've had uh the hockey, the hockey uh rooms been redone, all the different bathrooms and so forth. So much improvements. So we invite you down to please come down. I know it's important to Supervisor Garrity that maybe we can have a walk through some afternoon and thank you for all you've done. We're not here to ask for anything, but you never know what happens tomorrow. But the better we do, the more support we get, the more we can stand on alone. Not to say we may never be able to, but we lessen less and more and more. So on behalf of the Coalition and the Hockey Board, we thank you so much for your support and most appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board before we do the play of the month? No, at this time I asked Dean Moore and Cody Rumble come up to the podium. And Cody is uh one of our employees at the Parks and Rec Department. Up at the Fish Hack Green Forest.
Excellent. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm very proud to be able to nominate Cody Rumble. Cody is uh came on to the county in 2019. He's going into his fifth year. Um and the nomination came for two reasons. Uh one, he's dedicated to his job. And he has an affinity and willingness to work with others and help others on his crew. Yeah, I know. Anyone can say that. But I there's something that backs this up in all honesty, and I'm going to go off the grid here a little bit just to you can take it out on me later. Um not only a little busy facility, he's had, he has facility maintenance work in his background with the high school and that. He's also a very successful and respected wrestling coach of a very successful team in his past several years up in Warrensburg as well. But uh I think one of the biggest contributing factors may be, and I can't even begin, as a father of five daughters, God love you, sir. Cody does jobs correctly. He likes to do jobs correctly, likes to work with a team. And that really sets things apart. We all know the state of the state. I know my kids, I'm hoping to gosh, I can tell them to look someone in the eye. Um and live up to some of the coaching things, uh coaching attributes that Cody gets out of his kids. But um he really does work for the job to get it done right. And that is one of the most important things uh that I look forward to seeing, and I know that things will get accomplished by him. Um I do have a quick little interjection, but don't get wrong, don't get me wrong. We do a lot of work with felling trees, maintaining facilities, all the things you know that Parks and Rec manages. But I'm just going to go off the rails one last time and uh we were challenged. I don't know if you remember the 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 movie Kindergarten Cop with Arnold Schwarzenegger, biggest guy in the world brought down by a kindergartner with the interesting questions that were stated in that movie. But Cody and I actually, um I can attribute all the things I just mentioned. Uh we teamed up. There are a lot of things we could have done at that day at that free fishing clinic. We did the hatchery. Uh I could have did food, registration, parking. But no, this guy suckers me and he goes, why don't we do the fishing with the kids? Everyone gets a Zebco pole and there's a hook and that's involved in a bobber and and you got a hook thing. The patience has to be there for that entire hour and a half. After about three hundred hooked worms, fish, released fish, trout, not past, no offense, I do warm water fishing. I didn't say that, Jeff Engley. But um trout is a different thing. And actually getting through that day, just knowing the depths and the quality of the person that Cody is, I know that uh he's an employee of the county that the county can be very proud of. So that's like, thank you.
And don't challenge him in the disc golf.
Um I grew up in Thurman, graduated from Warrensburg. As Dean said, I have five daughters. I'm very much into the community. I love it. What I like about my job is my office. I love being outdoors. I'm in the Adirondacks. I'm on canoe sites. I'm on the river. I'm on the bike way. That to me is a blessing. That's you know, when someone says thank you on the bike, bike way, it makes a difference. It does. We know we're appreciated. And that's really what it matters to me, just making people happy and doing the best I can.
Uh we have uh one leadership training graduate this past month, Chris Canal. Canal from uh DSS. I don't think Chris is here. But uh we will make sure that he gets his uh certificate. Next up, uh we have a couple of long-term employees we'd like to recognize. I asked Pam Vogel if Pam would step up and John has a presentation to make to you. Pam had a wonderful forty-seven years with Warren County, so.
Uh we have a presentation for Pam. It basically, it's a letter with a county coin. And it says, Dear Pam, on the occasion of your retirement, we extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding and dedicated service to Warren County for an amazing forty-seven years.
That's a bunch.
From your start time, Warren County, as Warren County historian in January nineteen seventy-six, you worked your way up through the ranks in the Warren County Clerk's Office, progressing from Records Management Technician to Records Manager, and then elected to Warren County Clerk in two thousand and three. Your wide range of experience within Warren County Clerk's Office was instrumental in your ability to adapt to challenges. And in the modernization of the County Clerk's Office that we enjoy now, which includes online appointments, online access to millions of pages of records and more. Your leadership during the COVID nineteen pandemic, when the New York State enacted many requirements that limited slot crowd sizes and impacted the openness operations of the Department of Motor Vehicles Pistol Permit Bureau and Records Room was instrumental in the preservation of resident abilities to travel, file documents and more. We thank you for all you've done for Warren County. Best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you so much.
So there's a flag and a certificate. This was flown over the Warren County Municipal Center in your honor on the twenty-seventh of November two thousand and twenty.
Thank you so much. It's beautiful. Well, just a, just a couple of words. As you all know, this has been really uh an incredible uh opportunity. Um John has just mentioned a couple of things that I've done since I walked into that record room many years ago. And when I did, I knew then that I did not want to be anywhere else. And I don't know what drove me in that way, but I just felt it. Um and that has continued, obviously, through now. And not only the um the opportunities that have come to me, but also the journey that took me through some so many you know, seeing the facets of county government, the facets of state government, um working with agencies and and organizations and people, people all the time. So it's just been wonderful. When I look back over it, no regrets at all. Um one, one, there's a couple of things you may not know about me, but as a thirteen, fourteen-year-old um at Saint Mary's, the girls would go over after school and we'd go to the um to the uh Crandall Library and we'd all take one of those big tables and put our books down and everything. Of course, the intent was to do what? To do our studies, to get our homework done. Well, there were other conversations that went on. But meanwhile, in the back, there was this lady pushing book carts around. And I thought at that time, that must be the most wonderful job in the world. Little did I know, many years later, I have seven or eight book carts down in the County Clerk's Office and all mine. But I give them away. So that that's a little bit. The other part is very, very dear to me is the fact that I absolutely, absolutely love Warren County. And um I remember the day before the first primary in two thousand and three. I drove this county. As a candidate, you didn't want to bother anyone that day before. You know, you'd already been been out there. So I just drove this county each and every town. And it was just an amazing opportunity for me just to see how marvelous and beautiful it is. So I treasured that day and I tried to replicate it every so often as well, but it's truly, and the kids will say, well, come stay with us, come here, there. But Warren County is my home. And again, it taught us, um being here, it's not just county, the county that I love, but I I do love county government. And I'm I'm not sure I was the best at it, but um it just was uh that opportunity to work with so many and to understand functionality and uh to grow with it. It it has been, uh that has been a learning experience in and of itself. And so time passes and then back to the day after the primary. Uh in two thousand and three, I get a call from someone we all know and love. And she just commands the room every place she goes. Um our then District Attorney Kate Hogan. And uh I picked up the phone and Kate said to me, hey, girl. Where do you go from here? And I said, I go home. And so ladies and gentlemen, I am going home, but I thank you all to our staffs throughout this building, to the staffs in the clerk and DMV, beautiful people. But to all of you and the work that you will continue to do. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have a youngster of the bunch, three thirty-three years with the county. I asked Mike Spahn to step up.
And the letter to Mike said, Dear Mike, on the occasion of your well-deserved retirement, we extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding and dedicated service to Warren County for over thirty-three years. Your contributions to Warren County operations have been important and wide-ranging, starting during during your tenure as Warren County Real Property Tax Services uh and continuing when you were elected as Warren County Treasurer in two thousand and eleven. Your leadership with Real Property Tax Services allowed the agency to adjust and thrive in practices as practices and New York State guidelines, as well as technology changed rapidly. As Warren County Treasurer, your efforts to streamline and approve the occupancy tax collection process and involve short-term rentals in their collections provide an important funding for the hospitality industry in Warren County. We thank you for your contributions to Warren County and the quality, quality of life we enjoy around our wonderful county. We will continue to benefit from the legacy you leave behind. That's just a small amount of the things that you've done. Now that you're retired, maybe you can provide the cigar and bourbon.
Yes, it's on me.
And then we have a flag for you as well. All right. And that was flown on December fourth.
Nineteen ninety. I attended my first board meeting in this room. And um there was somebody there that was retiring and getting a plaque for over thirty years worth of service. And I said to myself, no way in hell I'm staying here for thirty years. And we'll see how that worked out. There's a lot of things I'm going to miss, a few things I won't, but I do want to thank everybody, my staff especially, and my and the department heads that I've worked with over the years have been phenomenal. Um this, it really is a good place to work. And I'll tell you the same thing I told my staff the other day. You got the first six months to blame everything that goes wrong on me and after that, you're on your own. Thank you.
Uh next up, we'd like to recognize our outgoing supervisors. And we'll just go right down the line. It's easier for us to remember.
What should we do? Stand? Run?
First up is Craig Leggett. Outgoing Chester Supervisor. Right, congratulations. This flag was flown at the Minister Center on November thirtieth. In three years, seven years of service, good account. Thank you. Next up. Peter McDevitt.
Even though science says don't put anything here.
We have a flag. For you also, it's flown over the Minister Center on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Body of Brainerd. And this flag is followed the Minister Center on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations. At the Treasurer, K. It's headed out this December, November twenty-ninth, and we're about to see you back.
It's meant to be that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up.
Yeah, I put it with my hundred first stop.
Next up, Doug Beatty. And this was flown over the uh Minister Center on December first, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations. Next up is to declare a public hearing open on local law number one of twenty twenty-four entitled a local law fixing the salaries of certain county officers, employees. And I request the clerk to read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York is considering the adoption of proposed local law number one for the year twenty twenty-four entitled the local law fixing the salaries of certain county officers and employees of Warren County. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at ten AM in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center located at thirteen forty State Route Nine, Queensbury, New York. At which time and place, all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law number one for the year twenty twenty-four will be heard concerning same. A copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, we'll declare this public uh hearing open. Anybody wish to address us on the local law number one of twenty twenty-four? Please come up to the podium and state your name for the record. Okay, any supervisors wish to address us on the local law number one of twenty twenty-four? Okay, well, we're leaving open for a few minutes and uh we'll move into Chairman's report. Uh my report for this month, on November seventeenth, I attended, obviously, the last Board of Supervisors meeting on the twentieth. I was at uh committee meetings, the twenty-first, I was at committee meetings. Twenty-seventh, I went to CSEA uh preparation meeting for the CSEA negotiations, which we have started. The twenty-ninth, I attended committee meetings. On the thirtieth, I attended inner county legislative and Saratoga Springs with Supervisor Thomas. And also, we started uh CSEA negotiations that day. On December thirty-fourth, I attended a TV meeting held in Lake George. On December seventh, I had a meeting with the Southern Adirondack Independent Independent Living Director, Kim Cardinal in Warrensburg. Also attended the CSEA negotiations on the same day. On December twelfth, we had another negotiation session with CSEA. And then uh on December fourteenth, attended new supervisors orient, orientation training here. We had a meeting first before we had orientation. And um I attended Pam's retirement uh reception that she had down in her office. And also this morning, I see a few of our newly elected supervisors in the room. If you just want to raise your hands. The two ladies from Glens Falls, Haley and and Nancy, and then Dave Strainer from Queensbury, I think that's it, but uh like to welcome them to our meeting and uh and I think we had a good orientation session yesterday. So that's my report. So we'll go right around and we'll start with Supervisor Conover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh the Public Works Committee, uh fairly busy this uh last month, uh representing your PAC at my resolution five seventy-eight through five eighty-eight. Uh, the Public Works Committee, uh, yes, they're very busy this last month, representing your packet by resolution five seventy eight through five eighty eight. The, I'll just highlight a couple of the items for your attention. Uh, first is. The awarding of an agreement with Maxi Environmental Services for household has displaced disposal. As you know, this is a program that we. Look forward to conducting every year for the. Correct removal and disposal of hazardous waste in our county. Very important programs, been very well received by the public and. Hopefully, we can continue this program going forward. Uh, the. The only other item that I think I'll bring to your attention, unless there's any questions, is resolution five eighty eight. Five eighty eight is that an agreement with Revolution Rail Company. As you know, they are the. The operator on our railroad. They, we recently went out for a. Uh, request for bids slash proposals. They responded. And what you have in front of you is to authorize the county to enter into a five year lease agreement. Mr. Hayes, without objection, quickly, if you could just explain the terms of the five year agreement. For the board.
I can. So we, as Ron stated, we put out an R F D for recreation use the airport. We only had one proposer, which was Rev Rail. The they had they had proposed two different scenarios, a year to year lease. At, I believe, eighty thousand dollars a year, or if we would. Uh, propose going into a five year term, it would be a hundred thousand dollars per year. So I believe this proposal today and the resolution is to move forward with a hundred thousand dollars per year. They will. Do their, no different than they have had last time. They'll do a cursor review of maintenance fact, some of the bridges that. Uh, have not been inspected in some of the areas that haven't been used. They will have an F R A inspection of all those bridges and they will submit it to us. Uh, and this will start as of January first of this year.
Maybe if if you can remember previously, historically, what our lease payment, what kind of revenue?
Our lease payment, the last one we had was only up to sixty thousand dollars, and that was the use of the Hadley Station, the Thurman Station in North Creek. This time it'll be a hundred thousand dollars and they'll have use of the forty miles of track as well as all the stations that we have.
And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Okay, before I introduce the Finance Chairman, I think it's appropriate to introduce the incoming new Treasurer, Christine Norton. Christine, congratulations and good luck. And now we'll go to Mr. Lee at Finance here.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Meta, the twenty ninth of November, before you are twenty three resolutions that have come out of findings. Nine of those are on roll calls, the lot of end of year items. And nothing really stands out for any further explanation. We are dipping into our. Uh, fund balance to take care of the Sheriff's Office as well as some mental health issues. Other than that, that's my report. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor McDevitt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The. Health services as well as economic development, had a series of meetings in the last couple of months. And if Edna, I can maybe speak for Edna, there are. Items as far as health services are concerned on on today's. Resolutions, none of them, I think. Require a great deal of communication. I think they're business as usual and. As far as. Economics are concerned, the at one of our latest. Economic meeting, we, some of the issues relative to economic development in Warren County were brought up, but I I think they're they're. It it should be noted in 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 at least. Identified for the public record, but as far as our housing study, which recently. What was produced by our very excellent planning department, they they talked about. At least one issue, and let me just cherry pick one issue in the report that I think it's worthy of noting. It talks about Warren County's population. Warren County, as we most people know, is a population that is aging. Uh, young people are moving. And the area is not attracting new residents. This demographic demographic shift is impacting local institutions, including school systems. Through declining enrollment and the size of our local labor force. Absent any intervention, these effects will continue to have. These negative impacts and at some point may result in the need to consolidate school systems, business closures due to a lack of labor supply. I spread agreement that addressing housing issues and supply shortages and affordability affordability issues in particular. Would be necessary in order to have any hope of addressing the changing demographics. I think it's important to. Talk about issues that may sound a a negative, but but in reality, they. Uh, because our population, we're not seeing significant growth in population. We and we do have an an older aging populations. It's it's much better, I think, to recognize and identify and talk about the issue. And to see if there's a way to, in fact, uh, put a put a positive spin, put a positive plan in place to. Uh, to make this just a better place to live. Another factor that I that I think is important in in terms of economic development is transportation. And one of the things that we recently did in the last. Six months, we we instituted instituted a mortgage tax. Nobody likes raising taxes in Warren County. But sometimes it is indeed necessary and and the benefits of the tax increase. Are necessary to ensure vital services to the majority of residents in Warren County. If we do not have in place. A fixed, transparent and predictable revenue stream for transportation in Warren County. Out into the 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 future for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, the system will in fact. Collapse collapse on us. Employees and employers will not be able to meet, will not be able to provide the the economic base, which will be necessary for the county. And lastly, I think an another. Uh, factor. That. Uh, is important in terms of quality of life in our communities, our our community solar projects. How do we transform landfills in various areas in our county into productive? Pieces of real estate. And transfer and transform a negative into a revenue generating asset. I I we have a couple of projects underway currently in Warren County, specifically one in in Queensberry. John Strauss, probably more knowledgeable of of these issues than anyone in the room. The since he he has some. Uh, certainly one specific piece of property off Ridge Road that that is currently under potential development, so. Ta- taking these negative assets and transforming them into positive. Je- revenue generating assets makes Warren County a better place to live. A a better place to do businesses and and then becomes a productive a asset for our community. That being said, I thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Supervisor Brainerd.
So much. I'll just follow up quickly on what Supervisor McDevitt said about the solar on landfills. We had a brief discussion about it at one of our recent environmental concerns meetings, and I think it's a great way. For Warren County to continue being a role, a a leading county in addressing the climate crisis by creating our own local energy. So. We are looking at it. I know. Hey, Jost, as well as our real property director, have kind of taken a look around the county at what parcels might be available, our old landfills, or anything else that we could use. For solar sites, so hopefully someone after us, Peter, will take up the mantle and continue running with that. Um, the Real Property Committee did not meet this last month, but I did want to report that we were able to successfully sell the Queensberry parcel to Nick Sharavelli. Out in the industrial park, so that that went off without a hitch. Thank you for making that happen. And then also. Since this is our last meeting of the Board of Supervisors, I did want to report on ARPA. We haven't met in a while, but. Recently, there was a press release from the county that really highlighted the amazing work that we have been able to do with the mental health. Funding that we provided earlier in the year. It's over a million dollars. Rob York and the Community Services Board have done an outstanding job looking through all of these applications that they requested for additional services for mental health. Um, throughout the county, and if you recall, when we did the survey of public back whenever that was, I think in fall of two thousand and twenty one. Mental health services be. Was one of the most needed services coming out of the COVID pandemic, so I think the county did a really good job responding to that. And allocating over a million dollars towards that, and you can see in the press release, if you haven't seen it, one of the major. Recipients of the funding is the Glens Falls Hospital for an expansion of their crisis unit to deal with people who are in a mental health crisis. We also were able to award funding to Wait House, to Ascend Mental Wellness. People USA, National Council for Mental Wellbeing, Adarondak Employee Assistance Program. Also, Look Media to do some mental health awareness. And also Brayton Psychological Services and Additional Funding to Continuum of Care Group. So I want to specifically thank Rob York and all of the existing mental health service providers in the county for being able to expand their services and help people with life changing. Um, services to help them through their their mental health issues. So that is probably the conclusion of the ARPA Committee unless I ask Amanda to throw one more. Meeting on the agenda next week or something, but I really appreciate everyone's involvement in the ARPA Committee as we. Distributed those funds throughout the communities. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was unable to chair or attend the meeting of County Facilities Committee on November twenty first, so I'll defer to. Vice Chairman Supervisor McGowan, who did chair that meeting for comments.
Well, uh, thank you. Um. Yeah, the, uh, the, yeah, to me, it was really. Really not a big meeting at all, so I I thank you for such a tough one to handle there. Uh, really just end of the year record keeping and and just, you know, cleaning up a few things, more of a discussions than everything else, so. To try to, uh, there was anything, uh. That we actually had. Because I think it was mainly discussion, so thank you for the opportunity.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, the Human Services Committee met on Monday, November twentieth. Uh, from that meeting. Uh, resolutions five sixty eight, five sixty nine and five seventy relate to countryside adult home in Warrensburg. Uh, resolution five seventy deals with Department of Social Services. Nothing earth shattering with either of those, any of those four resolutions. I ask for your support on those. Cooperative Extension. Also, uh, met this past month and on your. Uh, tables, you should have a program update that Amy has dropped off to us. Thank you for that. Human Services Committee and the Health Services Committee, that Supervisor Fraser has so excellently. Uh, chaired for a number of years. Both will have three vacancies. Uh, on their committee, so three out of the the seven members will be vacant. Uh, I ask respectfully ask that. Uh, current members and incoming members of the Board of Supervisors. Consider joining that committee if you have the passion for health and human service related matters. That's been my career for over forty years. I believe that all of the committees are equally important when we're dealing with. Uh, human beings, uh, infants, children, uh, young adults. Adults, senior citizens. That's that's what it's about. So I I invite people, if they're interested, speak to me at our. Meeting on the second of of December to consider speaking to whoever is selected to be Chair. On that, and I think we'll also have one vacancy on, uh, Cornell Cooperative Extensions Committee for the three supervisors who currently serve. Four supervisors currently serve in that committee, so that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Preyor. Preacher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report, but I would like to thank Supervisor McDevitt for filling in for me for those three months that I was away. I appreciate him doing that.
Thank you, Edna. Welcome back.
It's good to be back, even though it's my last meeting. I will miss all of you, so and have a nice holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Drossy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee last met on November twentieth. As a result, before today, we have resolutions five fifty through five fifty seven. Now, the law in regards to contract agreements, green applications or green executions, so ask for your support and consideration of those. Uh, a note from our Office of Emergency Services, obviously with COVID still highly in existence, we have COVID kits available for every community. And if you, you know, all you have to do is reach out to our Director, Ian Re Mason. And lastly, I just want to extend my thanks to our committee members, three of which will be leading the board at the end of the year. Uh, in particular, my thanks to our Vice Chair Supervisor McGowan and our our member Supervisor Smith, Conover, McDevitt. Driscoll and Leggett, I greatly appreciate all of your efforts and work throughout the year. I think we've. Supported our Criminal Justice and Public Safety Department Heads to a great extent and also. Lay the groundwork of our responsibility on behalf of them as well. And I'd just like to extend best wishes and holidays for good health, especially to all our employees, but to our public safety employees that will be working when. Just about all of us will be home in our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Smith.
What report, sir? Supervisor Montino. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you have some res- uh, resolutions. Five seventy three through five seventy seven for occupancy tax. They were all approved by the Oxidated Committee. And just some comments on. Occupancy is a tax is a tough one because we have to make decisions on taking away or giving more money to people. And sometimes it's not an easy task, so I want to thank the committee for working together and we'll move on in January on that. The only other thing I have, a little report from Sam Luciano from the Port Remy Henry on the. Light show. So far, they say they sold eight thousand tickets. They had five shows. And ti- ticket sales are significantly increasing in the last couple of days. Um, they are making some changes on comments and recommendations from people that went or people that saw the show. And they kind of fulfill saying, if we go again, it's not going to be the same. So they they found out some of the. Problems that they might be having. It was a test week. It's a good showing of people that went. Um, and they did have a meeting with Moment Factor and the Adarondak Studios to bring in some ideas to make a few improvements on the show to make it better. They will make a a regular report to the board and I will get it to you as soon as I get it. I thank everybody that went to that show. I will say my wife would be happy, but she got on the front page of the Post star. She was petting the wolf at the factory show and. It's like an unknown woman, but I will tell you it was my wife. And she was thrilled with the show because the way it worked, she was ten or twelve feet from the light on the wall, if you've been there, of the wolf. They're petting the wolf and she wasn't even close to it, so she was excited when we found out it was her. All right, and I think I'll just move right into tourism, if that's all right with you. Tourism has. Resolutions five eighty nine to five ninety two, all approved by the board and. We'll start working with tourism for new ideas. Other has been working and I've had a look at some of the. Things that are coming out for our new brochure, and I think that they did a dynamic job, and I think everybody will love it when it gets printed. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Supervisor Chow.
Yeah, thank you. Legislative Rules, Government Operations met on November twenty ninth. We have one resolution before you today. It's Resolution five seventy two. And it is a resolution. And it is a resolution for your consideration in adopting the computer breach notification policy for Warren County. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay Supervisor Wild.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Personnel and Education met on the twenty ninth of November. There's five resolutions. Actually, there's only four resolutions in front of you today that I would appreciate your support. Probably the one of most interest is five ninety four, part time position, uh, in the office for the agent. And if I'm not mistaken, that's fully reimbursed. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay Supervisor McGowan.
What report? Thank you.
Supervisor Beatty.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as this being my last meeting, uh, as I decided not to run for a sixth term. I wanted to thank Queensberry residents, uh, for putting me in five out of five times. It was a, it was a true honor. You know, I've been here for ten years, three thousand, three hundred and sixty five days. One hundred and forty board meetings, of which I've attended a hundred and thirty seven. I think that ninety eight point five percent ratio is probably. The best, if not one of the best on the, on the board. I worked for the residents from day one. And what I've done was my priority was to get the best value for every dollar we spent up here. Not spending it without thought, but getting the best value for every taxpayer dollar. I committed that from day one and I commit that to the day I leave. Proof of that commitment resulted in being the only supervisor to vote against the budget the last three out of six years. Why'd I do that? Because there was over taxation in there. There was wasteful spending, I felt. And so I, I resulted, uh, I decided that I'd vote against the budget. It's still passed and I'm glad it did. There's a lot of good things in each of them, but there were some things that I thought were wasteful and abusive. I had the privilege in the last ten years of, of stopping some of the outrageous, uh, uh, projects that were going to cost millions of dollars. One example would be the, uh, airport boondoggle. That was going to cost over ten million dollars to federal, state, and local county taxpayers. That took six years. It was the hard work of Travis Whitehead. Mark Westcott way back when, Claudia Bramer joined the fight, myself, and we got that stopped. The FAA said, no. You don't need to runway. It was never needed. The data that was supplied was not accurate and we proved that. And so, uh, that's, that was a real highlight, stopping that big boondoggle. Uh, a couple of other things that I'm very proud of. Was the fact that the Siemens Energy Project, which had some major faults. Travis Whitehead being the only engineer was able to convince his board to put on an independent engineering firm. Why? Is he the only one who could understand the report? And he says there's fraud in there. Well, I don't know if there's fraud, but I can tell you the independent engineering report indicated there are some major, major problems. With, with Siemens and the energy. And what'd they do? They wrote us a check for five hundred thousand dollars. Five hundred thousand. Now, most supervisors on this board didn't even want to, want to pursue this. I was adamant. Of pursuing it because I felt we've been wrong and it needed to be corrected. So a half a million dollars came into the Warren County coffers from Siemens. Who to great citizens like Whitehead, uh, Mark Westcott was on board with that, uh, Doug Hour and so forth. I'm also proud of the fact that we cleaned up the Lake George Lake Champagne Regional Planning Board. I personally spent hours and hours in, in County Administrator Moore's office. Reading over the application loan applications. It was wrought with the good old boy corruption. Now, I won't say corruption, but. Favors. A board was not even following their own policies and I could prove that. And so what happened? Well, the director resigned, thank you. And the board went over a major rehaul. And now I'm proud to say it's very effective, very effective. But none of that would have happened without us putting the light on the abuse of that board. It's not easy. I know I go against a lot of you guys in here and ladies in here. It's not easy doing the right thing. It's tough. Help when majority of the colleagues would rather go a different route, but that never stopped me from trying to do the right thing for the Queensberry residents. Another thing that I'm proud of is the fact that David J. Decker sits in prison today. He sits in prison today doing an eight to twenty four year stint. What'd he do? Well, he kept making, he kept, uh, having contracts with our towns, Queensberry, Bolton Landing, Lake George, and so forth. And not fulfilling his end of the bargain. Now, the town supervisors all signed off saying he did, and it's not their fault. They may could have done a little tighter job, but the fact of the matter is the man sits in jail today. Because he defrauded every taxpayer in New York State, every taxpayer, everybody in this room. Thousands and thousands of dollars. Maybe we all, maybe the town supervisor should learn a lesson from that that we need to be a little more diligent. Another thing I'm proud of is the fact that I supported when supervisors, female supervisors on this board spoke up. About the sexism on this board, about the misogynist on this board. I supported that. I supported their positions that something needed to change, that it had to come out from the back room and be put on the table. Claudia Bramer showed tremendous strength. Emerya Hogan showed tremendous strength. It's not easy doing that. Not easy at all. They're brave women. But it needed to be said. There's some serious issues from some of the supervisors on this board concerning how they treated female supervisors. And I stood behind them that day. I stood behind them day one and I stand behind them today. And I'm proud of that, even though some supervisors wanted to censor Mr. McGowan and I for supporting the women. That was absurd. So as I conclude, you know, this, uh, ten years, I couldn't be happier working with some outstanding county employees. Kevin Hayjors has been an absolute superstar, in my opinion. Julie Butler, Lexie Jury. Bud York, some of the names, some of the different names that stand out. And there's many more. I just picked some that came to my mind. He'd done an outstanding job for the Warren County residents and they should be applauded. And so, as I, as I leave today. I, you know, after three thousand, three hundred and, oh, not sixty five, because it's not the end of the month, but about forty five days. I leave with my head held high. I'm very pleased to have done this job for ten years. I'm very happy that the Queensberry residents overwhelmingly put me back in there every single time. And I'm very pleased of what we got accomplished for the seniors in Queensberry and Warren County. There was times we wanted to abuse our seniors by cutting back programs, by cutting, by not giving the extra effort, give them, uh, hot meals every day. Well, that's now behind us. I, I, I remember one, one senior in Queensberry saying, Beatrice Diddio saying to me, Doug Beatty, she stood right up to that podium. One year ago, about a year ago, he says, you've been an angel sent to us seniors. That will never leave me. That touched me that day. That touches me today. Because I did my absolute best to protect our seniors in Warren County in the, in the town of Queensberry. So, as the last day here, being a fiscal conservative, having the most independent voting record on this board. I never looked at party lines. I don't, I didn't then, I didn't five years ago and I don't today. It's not about a Democrat or Republican or an independent. I couldn't care less. I really could. It's about making the right decisions for the people of your, this county and the people I represent with Queensberry. That's all that ever mattered to me. I couldn't care less about what party calls what shot. I go to lunch every two weeks with Claudia Bramer. Last I knew she was a Democrat and I'm a Republican. I don't care. Care at all. So. If anyone ever wants to get ahold of me, they can. I've been proud and, and of, of serving with each and every one of you, even though we don't have. We don't see eye to eye on every issue. That's okay. That's democracy. We can have difference of opinion. That's okay. In fact, that's good government when we work together and compromise to come up with a conclusion. That's what democracy is. Being able to work together and still have your, stay with your points of view. Well, thank you very much for the ten years, each and every one of you. Some of you, I think, will be happy that I didn't run again. But that's okay. Who knows? Maybe I'll be back in a couple of years. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Eto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On December second, I attended an event at, uh, Saint Mary's Church, uh, their one hundred and seventy fifth anniversary. One of the longest continually operating places of worship in the county. I attended New Winter Dream Venue in Lake George. On the seventh, I attended a tree lighting event at Huffy Pond put on by our. Ninth, I volunteered at the Spirit and the Trees Event at Crandall Park in Glen's Falls. Thank you.
Supervisor Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the Budget Committee, uh, met on November twenty ninth and, uh, from that meeting, there's, uh, resolutions. Uh, from five thirty five to five forty nine, uh, authorizing payment to, uh, various agencies and, uh, organizations, uh, throughout the county. Uh, they're all, uh, repeats at, at, uh. Uh, some of them at different levels of, of payment and there's one rule and that's the last one and that's authorizing, uh, payment to, uh. Warren County Conservation Council of one thousand dollars.
Supervisor Ronaldino.
No report.
Okay. On the public hearing, is there anyone who, uh, would wish to address the board on the public hearing of local law number one? Ain't nobody, any supervisors? Public hearing, we'll probably hang closed. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November seventeenth board meeting. Motion by Supervisor Drossy, second by Supervisor Smith. Discussion on the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. For the county minister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Midwestern's report, uh, fifteenth December, twenty twenty three. On the twenty first of November, we had a, uh, insurance renewal meeting with Gallagher for property and liability insurance. That's represented by Resolution. Five ninety eight in your packet. Thirty of November, I spoke to the, uh. Adarondak Regional Chamber Commerce Board of Directors, uh, discussed our youth intern program and encouraged them to think of creative ways to engage with our area's youth. Uh, also gave them a rundown of what we anticipate our challenges will be for two thousand and twenty four. And we have a great partnership with, uh, Tricia Rogers and the ARCC. Thirty of November, met with Mike Grant, Mike Branigan of Queensberry School District and Liza Oaksendorf to further discuss youth issues. Workforce Development has designed a wonderful program that enables our area youth to work for businesses in our region. With workforce development paying the salaries. So that's a great initiative by Liza Oaksendorf and her team. Uh, and we'll continue to advance that whenever we can. First of November, met with the Warren County Interagency Committee. Uh, it's a meeting that is generally, it's co chaired by, uh. Tammy Breen over in DSS and, uh, it includes a lot of members, uh. Superintendents, principals, uh, educators from across the county to talk about some of the challenges we're facing with parent and student engagement. Uh, it's a great exchange of ideas. Um, and, uh, at the last one, I see Cam back there, uh, Sale did a presentation. Uh, for their services and it was, uh, well received. Uh, fourth of December, attended Glen's Falls Community Call to Action at Crandall Library. Was attended by many supervisors. Thanks for, uh, your participation in that. Glen's Falls has a pretty impressive, uh, engagement program for parents and youths. Um, and. Also brought together about twenty, uh, community agencies and organizations, uh. That all want to help with, uh, our challenges with our youth, primarily absenteeism in schools. Uh, and it was a. Really, uh, impressive, uh, evening. Uh, seventh of December, uh, went to the Winter Dreams Preview. Uh, much has been written. Uh, Supervisor Rolino made a lot of comments about that. So I appreciate that. Seventh of December, CDTA had their open house at Crandall Library, also attended by a lot of supervisors. Appreciate that support as well. Um, and, uh, they, they have a solid strategy going forward. No immediate changes, but they've added over two hundred additional bus stops. Almost doubling the previous number of stops that we had. Uh, and they have a good strategy going forward. They're going to study the transportation routes. Uh, and again, there are no changes to what we've been doing in the past. Uh, we can look forward to, uh, I think increased service in the future. Thirteenth of December, we had a meeting with our, uh, Marshall and Sterling, our broker, uh, about our health plan for retirees and, uh. Like to talk about that a little bit, uh, because you, there's going to be a floor resolution today. What we learned, uh, our coverage for retirees is through Humana. We learned recently, um, and actually through a former county administrator who's notified us. That certain services were no longer going to be afforded. Providers were not going to be paid by Humana. And it infected, it, uh, impacted a small number of our employees to begin with. Uh, we've also heard that there were challenges, possibly with Albany Med, who owns Glen's Falls Hospital. Resolution today is to change our retiree service provider for health plan to Anthem Blue Cross. And, um, it'll, uh, we get it. It's a little bit cheaper, but all services that are currently provided by Humana. Will be provided to our retirees. Uh, the reason we're bringing it as a floor resolution. Because, uh, some of the payments are going to stop the end of February and we want to get this new plan in place by the first of March. So that will enable us to do that. Appreciate your support on that today. Thirteenth of December, our comp plan, uh, project advisory group met, uh. And thanks to Supervisor McDevitt for comments today and also Supervisor Bramer. Um, the three focus areas of the project advisory group, uh. Are transportation, housing, and area infrastructure. So. Everyone's getting the message on transportation and housing. We know that's important, uh, and they'll continue to work on that. So appreciate. A lot of people attended, a lot of supervisors attended. Uh, appreciate that support. Um. On the fourteenth of December, yesterday, we had an orientation for incoming supervisors who will join us in January, uh, all attended and, um. We think it was a solid and productive session. I haven't gotten any feedback from the new supervisors yet, so I welcome that, but I sent you a copy of the PowerPoint slides we used. Uh, we look forward to welcoming, welcoming them in the new year. Uh, last night had a meeting, uh, uh, attended a meeting of the Queensberry, uh, School District. Uh, and this is again their engagement meeting. A lot of educators from Queensberry come together. And talked about, uh, the challenges they're facing with youth. They talked about, because they had, some of them attended the Glen's Falls. Call to Action and I don't think Queensberry is going to do that right now, have a call to action as well, but, uh. They're going to take advantage of some of the, uh, lessons that Glen's Falls took away from that. Three anniversaries, uh, Heidi Aldrich, Social Services, twenty years. Ellie Thompson, Countryside Adult Home, twenty three years. Damon Baker, DPW, twenty six years. Teresa Coate, Public Health, thirty years. Anne Marie Corcoran, County Clerk's Office, thirty three years. And Diane Labruzo, Treasurer, thirty seven years. On my list this month, uh, over half of the people on the list had less than ten years of service. And I can, uh, say that the county administrator now has one year of service to Warren County, of which he's very proud of. I just want to remind you, there's a reception following this meeting in the committee room. For the supervisors we honored today and for the treasurer and the county clerk, uh, appreciate everyone's, uh, attendance. Also, the other, uh, presentation for the, uh, supervisors who are not going to be with us next year. Is a Joseph Warren seal framed and signed by the other supervisors. They're in the committee room. We didn't present them because I want to give everyone the opportunity who has not signed the, uh. The presentation, uh, on the matting, uh, if you please do that after the meeting so we can frame those and present those to the supervisors. Uh, those of you who have flags, the boxes for the flags are at Anne's desk. Um, and you can, if you want to put them in a box. Uh, and then lastly, on behalf of the department heads at Warren County, thank you to the supervisors who are leaving and that all the other supervisors in the Board of Supervisors. Uh, who partnered so well with our departments and agencies the past year and during your tenure on the board. We wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and very best for the new year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. County Attorney. County Attorney.
Thank you. Good morning. On behalf of myself, the attorneys and staff of the county attorney's office, we thank each of you. It's been a pleasure working with each of you during this last two-year term. We want to wish you happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Have no report for this month, subject to any questions from members of the board.
Do you have any questions of the county attorney? For communications.
Capital District, Off-Track Betting Corp Financial Report, dated August thirty-one and September thirty, twenty twenty-three. Warren County Auditor's Real Property Protection Reports for October, November, twenty twenty-three. Washington County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number three nineteen of twenty twenty-three, appointing member to the Warren and Washington Industrial Development Agency and Civic Development Corporation. And two applications for real property tax exemptions from Fitzgerald Morris Baker for the first. And the second for Native Development Associates LLC in the town of Queensberry.
Hey. Three resolutions.
Proclamations forty-five and forty-six, Resolutions three fifty-three through six eighteen, were all distributed to the members of the Board of Supervisors and posted to the Warren County website on Monday, December eleventh. Floor Resolution Numbers One and Two were distributed and posted yesterday. Proclamations before you are number forty-five for Human Rights Month, and I'm sorry, forty-four, Human Rights Month, and forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-five is Human Rights Month, forty-six is. Resolution six fifteen was amended after. Needed to approve the amendments as provided.
Somebody want to make that a motion? Second by Supervisor Rolino, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
A motion is needed to bring floor resolution number one to the floor.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Leggett, second by Supervisor Runyon to bring for resolution number one to the board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Floor Resolution Number One is now Resolution six nineteen, and a motion to bring floor resolution number two.
Motion to bring floor resolution number two by Supervisor Wow, second by Supervisor Stroud, need discussion. Supervisor Framer.
Thanks. I am curious if this went through committee at all. It sounds like it didn't, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I just recall. When I was Personnel Chair, that a lot of the retirees did like, really liked the Humana program, so I'm wondering if we. Are going to do any sort of outreach to them to make sure they understand that they are going to receive all the same services. Because I feel that that is going to raise concern from people. Obviously, we really don't want to lose the oncology services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It did not go through committee. The reason, we found out about it just in the past two weeks. We were, we've been working it with Humana. For the oncology services. That's, it's New York Oncology and Hematology is where the first, they just. They decided they weren't going to cover them anymore, so that impacted a number of our people, so we've been trying to work with Humana. We've, we realized we were getting. Not going to get anywhere, and they, and that coverage is going to run out in February. Our biggest concern, though, and. Another supervisor has indicated that Humana has already said that they're not going to cover certain treatments at the Glen's Falls Hospital. The, almost the exact program that's in one of our towns, so that gave us concern. We met with Marshall Sterling. And they made the strong recommendation that we, even though the contract with Albany Med runs through May. If we wait to find out if they're going to come up with an arrangement with Albany Med, we might be in a bad, bad situation. So that's why we want to move forward with this now. We'll call all the retirees and explain this to them, and HR is ready to do that.
There has been some publicity about this, and the news, and people do call, and they've called even the towns that have Humana now. Signify by saying aye.
Our Resolution Number Two is now Resolution six twenty.
Okay. Passion and public comment on a resolutions. Anybody wish to address the board on a resolution? Press the board Supervisor Braemer.
Thank you. I noticed in the packet, there are a lot of appropriations out of the general fund, kind of cleaning up year-end stuff. Officer could provide us the status of the general fund amount at this point for the allocations.
Probably not exactly, but would say it's about thirty-six, probably about thirty-six million.
Yeah, we, I just got a nod from the treasurer. We, we have updated that, and it's about forty-two million right now.
About forty-two.
Any other discussions and resolutions? Oh, call votes on resolutions. We'll ask the clerk to go ahead with the votes.
Resolution number five thirty-three, making supplemental appropriations. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. Resolution five thirty-four, amending Warren County budget for twenty twenty-three. Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. Resolution five ninety-three, enacting local law number one of twenty twenty-four, entitled A Local Law Fixing the Salaries of Certain County Officers and Employees of Warren County. Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Fifteen. Resolution five ninety-four, amending table of organization and Warren County salary and compensation plan for twenty twenty-four. To create a position with the office, within the office of. Conover? Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. Resolution five ninety-seven, authorizing appropriation of funds from the general fund unappropriated surplus accounts to the middle.
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes. Resolution six hundred, authorizing appropriation of funds from the general fund unappropriated surplus balance to the sheriff's office. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. Resolution six oh-two, increasing capital project H four-ten Peaceful Valley Road. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
In favor, Resolution six oh-three, establishing capital project H four. It's here, twenty-eight rehabilitation project. Mr. Conover?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. Resolution six oh-five, authorizing appropriation of funds from the general fund unappropriated fund balance to the Office of Community Service.
I'm sorry, six oh-four.
Increasing capital project H three seventy-six Hudson Street over Mill Creek Bridge replacement. Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution six oh-four passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. Funds from the general fund unappropriated surplus balance to the Office of Community Services. Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. Resolution six oh-six, authorizing appropriation of funds from deferred revenue gaslight village parking fees to Charles Wood Park. Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Braemer?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Stroud?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifteen votes in favor. You just need a collective on the rest.
And collective vote on the rest. All those in favor of the rest of resolutions, signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Okay, privilege to the floor and public comment. Anybody wish to address the board? Supervisor Leggett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my last meeting here, I want to thank you. For the confidence you had put into me to be finance chair and, de facto, vice chair of the county. I also want to thank all the, my fellow supervisors here on the board as well. It's been an honor to be able to serve with you over these years. I have learned quite a lot. I want to thank the supervisor here to my left. Supervisor Conover for his mentorship. I've always respected his statement ship, statemanship that he's come with. It's, it's an admirable quality, and it's something that has served this board very well. But also, I could go around the table here with, with each one of you, but that would drag out what's been one of the shortest meetings we have had in a long time. But. It's been privileged to, to serve, there's no doubt about it. And to represent my hometown, my community here at county level, and be able to work from that intimate knowledge of a town. To the broader knowledge of the county and what it takes. Back in nineteen eighty, I came, first came to the county, worked in the planning department as a college intern. And then last year, I had the privilege, thanks to all of your support. To be the acting county administrator and hold that seat as well. Both unpaid positions, but they were the progression over that time. From college intern to the county administrator, and then also sitting here in this chair. Has been quite a journey. And I'd really like to recognize all the department heads of this county. Pay the care, the responsibility, the dedication that they have to their jobs, to the folks they work with. And to the county overall, and we are in such great strong shape. We have seen a turnover due to attrition on. Our, our department heads, and as we have filled them one by one, we see that our county was continuous to get stronger and stronger. We are in a good direction. Some. I've always appreciated Supervisor McDevitt bringing in the global issues into our, our local concerns here, and he had mentioned about the. Economy of the county. And I'm happy to see that the county has supported the comprehensive plan. Forty-some odd years ago, as the intern, I was wondering why we never had one, and as I sat on this board here. And listened to the discussions about each and every issue. I felt that something was lacking, and what we have lacking is that we are twenty individuals that are coming onto this board. All with our own ideas of how things should go, and nothing coming out from the total population of the county as well as our own input. On the direction for the county. What is our vision for the county? What are we gauging our decisions against and measuring? Towards those goals. So I'm happy to see. Warren County Comprehensive Plan moving forward. I look forward to being able to stay on and advisory group on, on there and working through to see its completion. But population often comes into mind here. As a society and culture, we always think that growth is necessary. And when you look in natural terms, it is, but growth comes in different ways. And back when I was an intern here, I did my paper on. Something from a book called Design with Nature, and where you look at nature as the model, as example to follow, because. It's pretty well keyed in. It's been around a long time, and it's a complex system that works. So in our own human invention. What we can do to take lessons from that. When our nation started out in pioneer spirit, we think of an open landscape. And growth has a particular form on that pioneer species, so to speak. But then as things mature, we come into the mature landscape, the mature habitat that is created with multi-levels. And it's not always based more on growth, but on the cycling of energy through it, from sunlight through decomposition. And as we look at our county, we should not look at population as being the great indicator of our health. What we should be looking at is the flow of energy through our communities, cycling our dollars, for example. Through our, our community. Keep the energy that is here moving around. We will always need energy inputs, and that does include some growth. But it is not along the same lines and extent that is often used in our. Very popular consumer economy. That will not serve us well in the area that we live in now. I would like to thank the clerk and the board. Amanda and all of her staff, Sarah. Samantha. Leslie, Molly, all of them taking care of us and keeping us going and, and keep the information ahead of us. Also like to thank, there's Tammy back there as well that does so much work behind the, the scenes. We could go down the list of all the other eight hundred employees within the county. But I will say, I'll end with this. The best cup of coffee in the county is over there in that boardroom. That Folgers might be deep. Thank you all very much.
Anybody else?
You know.
Thank you. If I may, yeah. I, I do want to thank the constituents of Ward Three and all of the residents in Warren County. It's been a wonderful honor and a privilege to serve here on the Warren County Board of Supervisors. I mentioned earlier, the ARPA, that I think that's one of the, uh, things that I'm most proud of, our accomplishments, um, providing meaningful grants to small businesses in Glens Falls and throughout Warren County, helping them, uh, come out of the COVID pandemic and be able to be successful as they're moving forward. And as I already mentioned, the mental health, um, funding is really important as well. And such a need that I don't think we really realized until we saw that survey and saw how many people were writing back about their, their mental health needs. So I'm really, really proud of us for having addressed that and gotten the money out to people in ways that have been really successful. I, I also want to thank the department heads. I don't want to name them individually because I'm sure I'll forget some, but we have, um, wonderful staff here. And we are really fortunate to have the people that we have here working every day and driving the county forward in really, um, important ways. And I think we do. I'm, I've been involved in NISAC a lot and have seen other counties and the way they function. And I think that Warren County really is one of the best counties in the New York, in the entire state of New York. So I'm very proud of the employees and I, I, um, urge you to continue working hard for, for Warren County and our residents. There's a lot of transition happening. Uh, you saw we have six brand new supervisors coming in. We have a brand new county clerk, a brand new county treasurer. And I really appreciate the chair welcoming them. I also urge you to please continue to offer them respect in and out of this room. You know that there are going to be difficulties and challenges coming from all different angles and even, um, personal attacks on them as well. And I, I would ask you to please denounce them whenever and wherever they come from. And I wish you all the best, everyone here in this room, um, going forward with your roles as supervisors of your towns and here at the county and best of luck in twenty-twenty-four.
To say, I certainly agree with Greg and Claudia, but I'd just like to say to me, it's been a real privilege to have been here for twelve years. I've worked with just some wonderful people. Department heads, like, they were just phenomenal and I just wish them all the best. And like I say, I will miss you all. It's been a wonderful experience for me all these years.
I agree with everything you, everybody said. It's been a pleasure. Sometimes we battle and sometimes we look at each other, but I think it all works out in the end. But I would like to just, um, thank one person, Heather Bradshaw, our new tourism director. She's been here six months. She's worked really hard to catch up.